Richie and I have important things to do tonight. It's 4:30. Okay, it is 4:30, Monday, May 14th. A call to order the Delnort Solid Waste Management Authority, City Crescent City, County of Delnort, State of California. And this is a special meeting for today because of a scheduling thing. So would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Kellen?
Here.
Commissioner Naffa?
Here.
Chair and Score?
Here.
Commissioner Greenow?
Here.
Commissioner Howard?
Present. All right, would you please stand for the College of Allegiance? And begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Public comment, any member of the public can address the Solid Waste Management Authority on any matter, on or off the agenda. After receiving recognition from myself, please give your name and residency for the record and limit comments to three minutes. Do we have any general public comment? Yes, Ms. Cooper?
I'm Cooper, Delmar County. So, I believe there's a small committee of two of you that are meeting to see how to improve waste management techniques, reduce contamination, efficiency, et cetera. And I have always been invited as a member of the public, as a democratic right, I guess, to attend subcommittee meetings of the county of various sorts. And so, I don't see this committee as being different than any of the other county committees that I've attended, including two-by-twos and resource committee meetings, et cetera, et cetera. So, why, the ideas that might come forward at such committee meetings that the public has at times brought forth have been valuable, so I don't see why there couldn't be public attendance, or why there shouldn't be public attendance. It seems highly irregular that there wouldn't be allowed, I get. Not that you have to post it on every, all agendas and make a site for it, but I have been on Heidi Constel's email list for different committees and when I have informed her that I've wanted to attend, and I don't see why that shouldn't be with these committees. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? All right, seeing no other public comment, we'll close public comment and we're going to move on into our open session items. Our first is our consent agenda. We have five items. The minutes from April 19th, the claim 8179 to Redwood Leavitt Insurance in the amount of $10,757.52, sponsorship for the 2018 Delnort County Fair in the amount of $2,000. And in response to requests from the Crescent City Delnort Chamber of Commerce Authority allocated bin pulls for the 4th of July, and then two in association with Sea Cruise. And then the final item is a budget transfer of $12,050.
Make a move to approve the consent agenda, items 1.1 through 1.5.
I have a motion. Do you have a second?
Second.
Have a second. Do you have any public comment on the consent agenda? Seeing none, would you please pull the vote?
Commissioner Kellen?
Yes.
Commissioner Naffa?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Greenow?
Yes.
Chair and Score?
Yes, very good. We'll move on then, into our agenda then, and we will turn our attention to our director's report.
Thank you, Chair and Score. So highlighting some of the activities coming up in the coming month. May 24th, there will be a cleanup organized by the City of Crescent City for the area around Elk Creek. There will be a spring clean sweep, also sponsored by the city. So residents who are south of Ninth Street will have their spring clean sweep collection Tuesday, May 29th. And Ninth Street and North, who are still in the city limits, their collection will be Wednesday, May 30th. Starting in June, the Klamath Transfer Station is open on Fridays, in addition to Sundays and Wednesdays. And starting on June 7th, the Gasky Transfer Station will be open on Thursdays, in addition to Saturdays. So that's for our summer hours. We continue to have our half-hour program, Rethinking Recycling, on K-Fug Radio. That's the second Friday of each month, so next it'll be up on June 8th. Other things that we won't necessarily be covering elsewhere in the agenda, we're pleased to announce that Humboldt Moving and Storage is now providing no-cost drop-off for mattresses and box springs every Wednesday from 9:00 a.m. until 1:00 p.m. Staff are excited about this more frequent and convenient mattress recycling drop-off location, but staff will continue to advocate that as long as the Mattress Recycling Council is allowed every day to collect $10.50 per mattress and box springs sold in Delnort, we believe that free mattress recycling drop-off services should also be available every one of those days. So we'll continue to be advocating on that front. Also, on May 12th, Curie Seymour gave her first backyard composting course, and that went fairly well at the Community Health Clinic on Washington Boulevard. And finally, the authority has hired two new employees, Scott Leggett and James Van Cleve, and they're currently under training. Scott Leggett is a returning employee. He used to be a refuse site attendant and has moved back to the area and reapplied for the job. So we're happy about that, those new hires. They seem to be working out well. And then finally, attached to the director's report is a letter we received from Scott Smithline, who's the director of CalRecycle. And essentially, it's a long explanation from their perspective of what the state is doing in response to the challenges of the changes that China has made to the recycling requirements. So they've now reduced, as we've talked about, they're only accepting recyclables that have less than half a percent of contamination, and of course, that's impacted all of us because they represent about 60% of the global recycling buying market. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Ted, do you intend to go down to the workshop on the, I think it's the first Friday in June that CalRecycle is sponsoring to specifically address these?
I will be tracking that. I had not yet made plans on attending. That's the short answer. I will look into that further with your encouragement.
Okay. I just think that as fluid as all of this is, and certainly in reading their letter, they were very cautious in how they stated enforcement and skirted around the applicable law. And I just think we really need to hear what their options are and how they're going to approach these things, because after reading this letter, it's really clear that they know that there's no way that they can really enforce where we are, given the global nature of this. But we need to know what they're talking about. And I think that my encouragement would be, if it's possible for you to be there, that we need to have presence there. I wish that I could go, because I really want to hear what they're thinking you're doing, but I'm not even getting back to the 30th, so turning around and traveling in two days would be impossible for me.
I will look into that strongly, sir.
Thank you. Anything else? Yes.
I was just, I mean, I read through it all, and I was just wondering if there was anything in there that you thought might be useful for us to use?
Well, there are a couple things. One, the main message that they're offering is that while they could impose fines for noncompliance based on our various jurisdictions missing their recycling targets, they've also stated very clearly that they understand the global situation, how it's impacted everybody, and they will be looking for good faith efforts. And they tried to flesh out a little bit more about what they meant about good faith efforts. I'm fairly confident that our, it is very, very unlikely that the Delnort Solid Waste Management Authority would be seeing any fines as a result of these downturns in recycling markets. That doesn't mean that we don't have to continue to look at everything we can do to try to improve the situation, and we are certainly trying to do that. But again, I feel like the likelihood of fines is very low.
Thanks.
Anything else? Okay, let's go ahead and go on to the financials.
Our finances continue to look pretty good. Currently, we have $1,056,000 in the bank, plus the nearly $200,000 for the last month's rent, so our cash flow is good. Our collections, again, I'd point out the good work that Catherine Brewer is doing. You can see that anyone who's, there's nobody outstanding from 61 to 91 days, and anybody over 90 days has already been turned over to collections. Looking at the claims approved by director, upside down or otherwise, our largest payment once again goes to Hambro WSG for the good services they provide at the Delnort County Transfer Station. And then, I did include there a regional rate comparison, and we'll be talking about that just a little bit further on, about how our rates are going to change based on the changes to the Consumer Price Index. Looking at our monthly totals, we were a little bit ahead this last month compared to where our budget was. So looking at our authority revenue report, currently looking at authority service fees, even considering the adjusted budget, we are still $36,100 ahead of budget regarding authority service fees from the Delnort County Transfer Station. And regarding franchise fees, we're $10,571 ahead of budget on franchise fees. So both of our revenue lines are ahead. We haven't overspent our budget line, so our finances are in good shape.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Ward? Okay. Then, if we don't have any other questions, let's go ahead and move on then to, I guess, number four.
Yeah, let's bring up the PowerPoint I have, because this affects both of these things. So this is the time of the year when not only do we look at our budget process, but we also look at how the rates are going to be changing in the coming year. Our fiscal year starts July 1, and that's when the rate changes get implemented. But we implement those rate changes because they're in our contracts. Part of the contracts are the concept that inflation goes up, price, costs of doing business go up. But it shouldn't be a big point of argument about adjusting based on inflation. So in both of those contracts, our contractors have did a certain percentage of the change to the Consumer Price Index. So for Hambro WSG, it's 80%. For Recology Delnort, it's 85%. But then we use the changes in the Consumer Price Index and do the math and give them 80% of those changes. In addition, because the rates for Recology have components, just looking at the disposal portion of each rate, say for picking up a can, a certain portion of it is operations to stop the truck, a certain portion of that service fee is transport, and a certain portion of that service fee is disposal. So each one of our rates has a disposal component. And when the disposal goes up by more than 5%, then they also get an adjustment based on the changes in the disposal rate. So this is, that's sort of the verbal description of the math. But let's look at how that will impact our customers. So our responsibilities, you're familiar with. I use the same slide to describe to the city and the county our responsibilities, but I assume you're all familiar with that. So looking at the rate comparison for 1819, even with these rate adjustments, our Delnort County Transfer Station will still have the lowest rates in the region. So it'll go up to 100, just a little over $151 a ton, but we still have the lowest minimum charge and a low per cubic yard rate charged at the Gasky and Klamath facilities. Here's the math showing that. So we're looking at a per-ton rate of $151.44. The minimum charge at the Gasky and Klamath Transfer Stations will be $9, and at the Delnort County Transfer Station will be $7.75. It's currently $7.50. But you can see those rates are lower than any of the facilities in either Humboldt or Curry Counties. So we do not receive any taxes as an agency. We operate the transfer station, we receive funds from that. We also receive franchise fees and grants, but no taxes at all are used to provide these services. The budget is proposed to the Authority Board on April 19th. You reviewed a draft. The City Council got a chance to look at it on May 7th. These include CPI-based rate adjustments, and those are included in all of our budget projections. And our budget this year includes $212,000 set aside towards assisting with the development of a northern transfer station with a site as yet to be determined. We also kept the same level of OPEB funding. So if all goes according to plan, then we'll have a public hearing prior to the Authority adoption of this final budget on June 19th. So here we have the organizational chart. You can see we have the two new employees, Scott and James. And it was pointed out to me that some of our key contractors, including our treasurer controller, Rich Taylor, and our legal counsel, Martha Rice, are not included on this chart because they're not staff, they're contractors. So looking at the total solid waste system, and it's important to look at this because this board is responsible for this whole pie. Even though the Authority staff and everything that we do is this green section of the pie, the Authority Board, U5, are responsible for the whole pie. So the total system revenues for this whole animal are about eight and a half million dollars annually. Now, there's different sort of cycles on these fiscal reports, so these, for instance, Recology's is from last year, ending in September. Hambro WSG has a different fiscal year. So these periods of time are not exactly overlapping. But as a crude approximation, this is about what you see. Recology Delnort receives the majority of the funding for solid waste dollars. Hambro receives the next largest share, and the Authority receives the smallest share. So looking at what the Authority plans to do with those revenue, or where those revenues are coming from, you can see the largest portion by afar comes from the transfer station service fees. We have a portion from the landfill fees, and then smaller amounts in grants, and then this little tiny orange slices, like interest and other things. So small amounts there. Looking at how we're spending that, you can see the biggest chunk is salaries and benefits, but we've set aside a fairly large chunk for development of the northern transfer station. This is the payments to the I-Bank loan for the transfer station, and then this is the amount set aside for the other post-employment benefits. You can see those are our largest expenses. Let's see how this impacts our rates. So looking at the collection rates, the standard 32-gallon cart, including recycling, will go from 2613 currently to 2721. So an increase of just a little over a dollar. And you can see on this chart, the portions like these temporary drop-off, temporary roll-off bins, those have the highest proportion of disposal charges, and that's why those are going up 7% as opposed to 4%. Looking at the rates at the Delnort County Transfer Station, you can see that we're going from 100, our current per-ton rate of 148.50 to 151.44. That's an increase of just about 2%. These percentages will vary a little bit. Some of that is rounding error. Hello, okay. And then here are the rates at the Gasky and Klamath Transfer Stations. You can see the minimum charge will remain the same. There's a slight increase in the per-can charges. So those are the kinds of changes that we will be looking for. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions, but that's the overview of how our finances and our budget come together. And the first item for action for the Authority Board is the consideration of the Collections Change Order 15, which is Agenda Item 4.1.
I do have one question. Can you go back to that rate page?
I may be able to.
With the different percentages? Anyway, I was just wondering, why is there a difference between the different carts? You said it was a 2%, but it's, there's 2% and there's 3% another, then there's...
Yeah, I tried to explain that. The rates under our contracts are broken down into components. So you have the operations, transport, and disposal.
Is that because of weight?
Right? So just for sake of argument, say you have a $5 rate. Maybe a dollar is operations, another dollar is transport, and then $3 might be for disposal. So as the, you can do the CPI for all of those rates, but the disposal rate had an extra adjustment this time because the transfer station disposal rate has gone up by more than 5% since the last time it was adjusted under Recology's contract. So that's the reason why these 20, 30, and 40 cubic yards have a 7% increase as opposed to the 4% increase.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Okay.
So...
Yes?
Ted, I think the question that comes back, that is trying to understand that if we, well, maybe, and maybe I'm mistaken, is there not a cap on what the increase can be at any given time?
We have a cap on Hambro WSG's contract, but there is no adjustment cap.
So we're on the first, that's where I got the two.
On Recology's.
Okay. Good deal. Thank you. Any other questions?
Thank you for clarifying that. I thought we had a cap on it as well.
It is on the other one.
Yeah.
That's my fault. Okay.
Okay, so staff would recommend adoption of Collections Change Order 15.
All right, do you have any public comment on this item? We'll close public comment then, and then I will take a motion regarding Change Order 15.
I move to approve Change Order 15.
I have a motion and I have a second. Would you please pull the vote?
Commissioner Kellen?
Yes.
Commissioner Naffa?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Greenow?
Yes.
Chair and Score?
Yes, very good. All right, let's move on then to under Transfer Station 5.1, Change Order 27. So similar discussion, Mr. Ward?
Yes, this is, this makes the changes to the Hambro WSG contract for transfer station operations. And let me just say that this describes the fees paid to Hambros, so don't get confused and look at the change order and say, well, that's, those aren't the rates, because they aren't the rates. Those are the amounts paid to Hambros.
Okay. Make the motion approved, Chair. All right, I have a motion to, now, are we going to do this resolution separately?
Yes.
Okay. So I have a motion to approve Change Order 27, and I have a second. Do you have any public comment? Close public comment then. Would you please pull the vote?
Commissioner Kellen?
Yes.
Commissioner Naffa?
Yes.
Commissioner Greenow?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Chair and Score?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, now we have to do the resolution, so it's under Item 6.1.
Right. 6.1 is a rate resolution. The reason why we're able to do a rate resolution instead of an ordinance, because if there are any new fees or new services or new charges that were implemented, those would have to be implemented through an ordinance. But we're able to do a rate resolution because really, we're not changing any of these contracts. We're merely implementing the rate changes, which have already been approved within the contract.
Motion approved, Chair. I have a motion to approve Resolution 201801. Do you have a second?
Second.
I have a second. Any public comment? Seeing none, we'll close public comment and bring you back to the board. Would you please pull the vote?
Commissioner Kellen?
Yes.
Commissioner Naffa?
Yes.
Commissioner Greenow?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Chair and Score?
Yes, very good. All right, we're moving on to legislation.
This is the time when legislation starts getting hot, so that I've pored through the websites of members, of groups to which we are a member, including Californians Against Waste and the California Product Sureships Council, as well as the Environmental Services JPA of the Regional Council of Rural Counties. So all of those, I looked at their websites, looked at the bills, tried to consider what was in the best interest of the agencies, and my recommendations are there. However, it's important to emphasize, these really are the board's positions. So if the board disagrees with any of these, or suggests a different advocacy position, I'd be happy to follow through with the wishes of the board. I'd be happy to discuss any of these things. I did try to keep the agenda packet not too thick this time. I could have printed out the text of each of these bills, but that would have made a much thicker packet, and not everybody enjoys reading legislation.
All right. Does the board have any comments regarding the specific bills that Director Ward has put before us?
I would just like to point out that whether we like reading legislation or not, it's our responsibility.
Yep.
And it should be in our packets. So that's just my opinion on that.
I will, I will follow through on the wishes of the board. There is a website that I included a link to, and all of the current led, current language on each of those bills is available through the ledgeinfo.legislature.ca.gov website.
RCRC summary is pretty decent also, or no?
I actually found CPSC and CAW more useful in this particular regard.
Because it's more specific to what we do.
To solid waste issues, yes. The ESJPA oftentimes will cover a wide range. In fact, towards that end, the board specifically asked me to look into AB1912, which was not in either of those lists. This is a concern because essentially, for, it's probably a concern really more for the member agencies, the city and the county, in that if a JPA has dissolved, the liability for post-employment benefits rolls over to the dissolving agency. So that is a concern to some communities, and the city has already voted to oppose that particular bill. But looking at the contents of that bill, it was not clear to me that it was as much in the interest of this agency as it would be in the interest of our, the city and the county.
Just another thing, if you don't mind.
Sure.
Did all of these bills all of a sudden just appear out of mid, you know, thin air? I mean, why are we getting all of these on this one agenda?
Because that's the legislative cycle, and last month, there weren't this many bills in play. Legislation can be kind of hard to track in that the bills will change very quickly in a very dynamic fashion, and there are some bills that are called spot bills, that essentially are just blank bills that at a last moment can be filled with text that impacts everybody. And so you have to especially watch those kinds of spot bills. But while I appreciate the need and the desire to wade into these things slowly, legislation happens on a very fast timeline.
And also, you know, the art lobbying groups like RCRC and CSAC are following these at the same rate we are. There's close to 5,000-plus bills just in the state of California this year. Most of them spot, some of them not even getting as far as some of these have gotten. So just in defense of what the director's going through, we just got notified of this two weeks ago, and with our current scheduled meetings, I'm not surprised. We're just getting up to speed on these now.
Okay. Yeah, and what Mr. Howard is pointing out is, the same thing would be true with us with the League of Cities, and frankly, trying to wade through, as being the only person from city council standpoint, of trying to wade through all the legislation. I mean, and I was not able to attend our last meeting in May as part of the legislative committee. It's just, it's a daunting thing, looking at these. And they, and they do understand that oftentimes putting them out in bulk, yeah, in, we're, the only one on here that, and I did not have a chance to read all of these. I am a little interested in this whole connect the cap thing of 2779. I hope that they connect the cap with something that's also going to be recyclable.
Yep.
Because if they don't, we're just going to have to cut them off. But from a CRV standpoint, I mean, because I'm assuming they mean all... But from a CRV standpoint, I mean, because I'm assuming they mean all, it says all plastic. I don't even know how you do that, but...
There are some, it's, essentially, it's a leash. It's a plastic leash, it has a collar, and then a leash that's attached to the cap itself.
But we, but here locally, that didn't help us. We've got to pull them off.
The...
We'd have to have something to cut them off.
I, I can't comment how exactly it would work. Because if they were all attached, there would be a way, an automated way of separating them. Easy enough to send them through and have a cutter of some kind. But again, we're, I believe this bill specifically was trying to deal with the fact that bottle caps in general are a very pernicious problem in the ocean. They tend to float, and so they tend to be taken up by albatross. And if any of you have ever seen the horrendous photos from the Midway Island, feel free to look up, but it's very depressing.
Yeah.
Okay, I just, I find it difficult to make a decision with three days, you know, in three days on nine pieces of legislation. That's a lot of reading to do at such very short notice. I kind of feel that we should come back with this at a later date. It's just my opinion.
I appreciate that. The conversation is a timely one, is all I can say. So if we take too much time, then in terms of our voice being heard in Sacramento, we wouldn't have such.
So we have two that are, that are on the floor. Everything else is in committee?
That's correct.
So what are the lobbying groups for us generally have an idea when they come out of committee? Are we looking to support these while they're in committee, or are we looking to support these before they withdraw?
I wasn't being as strategic as that. Because all of this, the dates are different for different bills, and depending upon the actions of the board, though, I will focus on, I will try to figure out which one is most timely and hit those ones first. And I agree, the ones heading the floor are the higher priorities immediately.
Nineteen twelve.
Absolutely.
Well, and, and Mr. Ward and I talked about this, is that nineteen twelve is really going to have application to member agencies if the JPA dissolves. So we really, the Solid Waste Management Authority, or Border Coast Regional Airport Authority, JPA's such as these really don't have a dog in this fight. We're just the dog that may create the fight. Because we'll be gone. So while I, you know, so it really is something the city and county, and then for the Airport Authority, that each member's agency, I think, needs to weigh in on from that standpoint. So I don't think there's anything we even need to do personally. That's just my take on it.
If, if both agencies choose to oppose it, I mean, we could send something from the Solid Waste Management Authority.
If we're in agreement.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, I don't know that it hurts one way or the other, whether we weigh in on it. But we will not be affected by the law. The only way we'd be affected by law is as member agencies, not as, not as the Solid Waste Management Authority, because the only way it would apply would be if this authority dissolved. So I can go either way. If we want to write a comparable, a compatible letter like the city did, I'm not opposed to that.
We asked our director to follow legislation by participating in the JPA. He's gone out, he's done the research, he's brought it back to us, he has his opinion on it, which we support, which we shouldn't. I, if it's a timely issue and he says, let's do it, then I want to listen to why and move forward.
Sure, absolutely.
That's just my opinion.
Okay. Mr. Ward, what would, what would your recommendation be regarding AB nineteen twelve?
I think if this, both the city and the county viewed this as opposition, the, I do tend to try to look at these things in, in terms of what are the interests of the agency. And the comment that I think that would be reasonable from the, from that perspective of the agency is to offer that, that in general, opposed unless amended, might be an option, with the amendment being that perhaps the liabilities for other post-employment benefits could be rolled over to a new JPA if there was a successor JPA formed instead of the existing JPA. That wouldn't affect the bill much, but it would be significant in that it would be an avenue for the member agencies if, for whatever reason, you decided that this was not the right way to solve your solid waste problems, and you wanted to create another JPA, that maybe there would be a way of reformulating things so that that liability doesn't fall to the member agencies, but it could be housed in a subsequent JPA. That might be an option.
I have one comment on how this might be of interest to this board. The joint powers agreement sets up the potential for adding additional agencies, and that hasn't really, I think, been seen as a need, but if in the future it is, and this bill becomes law, that won't happen. Nobody will join, knowing that they have to take on your OPEB responsibilities back to your, beginning of your existence. So that's one way that it could impact this agency.
Interesting, and I did just have a casual conversation with a member from the Uro tribe, exploring what would it take if we wanted to become a member? What would that look like? And how, so that's a very relevant point.
I mean, it's a, it's an interesting dynamic with the, from the standpoint of us operating as, as, as an employer, and in essence, we have a responsibility to these OPEB liabilities. But then on the other hand, while we're operating here, four of us represent the entities that made up this, and if this dissolves, do we want to take on those liabilities? So on one side, we're saying we're supporting the people who work for us, and we, we accept their responsibility of those liabilities. Do we want to pass that on if this agency was to dissolve? Well, I tell you one thing, if, if AB nineteen twelve passes, ain't nobody going to talk about dissolving solid waste. No one. You're never going to get, you're never going to get votes to do that from this board, because, because the city and the county are going to simply say, well, you just protected solid waste from, from ever being completely privatized, because we're not going to take on those OPEB. So maybe that's a, maybe that's a good thing, that it protects this JPA into perpetuity. I still don't like the bill, but if we feel like we should weigh in on it, then I'm fine with that as well. The city already has, and I'm certainly not opposed to doing, to doing so here either. I brought it up, and so...
I don't think it's a good piece of legislation. I think we should oppose it on all fronts, so that's how I feel.
You're all quiet down there today. You got a...
What?
Yeah, yeah. Are you? Have any thoughts from, from the far end of the dais?
I am, I'm good with it, whatever the board feels is necessary. I, you know, I trust what Ted brings before us on all fronts. You know, yes, I follow legislation. Do I follow all 5,000 bills that are going right now? Absolutely not. So when the director brings stuff in front of us, I believe he's bringing them in the best interest of the board. So I am fully in support of what he has brought through to us today. You know, obviously, there's some, somebody else who feels a little bit differently on all of those, so, but for me, I'm, I'm good on all fronts.
Okay. Well, the two items that seem timely are the ones that are, that are actually on the floor. And without, other than just reading the cursory narrative of twenty-seven seventy-nine, I guess my, my question is, is as it states even here, that they are recyclable through existing beverage container recycling infrastructure, but not here.
They are actually recyclable here. You just don't get CRV for them.
Not through our beverage recycling process.
You don't, you don't get a nickel for them.
But they're not even, they're not even part of that infrastructure. They're part of our, of our regular curbside recycling or community bin recycling, but they're not part of the, the beverage container recycling infrastructure in the sense of CRV, which is, so in sense, and I'm guessing that that probably exists in other places as well, which means we're right back to the same thing. You connect it, but then every CRV container, those things are going to have to be cut off, and what's going to happen to them? They're going to end up somewhere again, and are we just, is this bill just going to add cost to, for, for manufacturing to, to, to go through this law when it doesn't fix the issue, because those things end up having to be cut off? And what happens to them when somebody cuts them up? Are they going to put them in there recycling now, or are they getting thrown in the trash? Because that's what happens, that's what happens, I think, in a lot of places, is people realize, oh, I can't, I got to take all these off, and then they end up just throwing them away. So I don't know how this works. It seems like it's another way to... Again, I haven't done enough research on twenty-seven seventy-nine, but it just doesn't seem to add up to me, but I know it's a real problem. I get that.
And not just that, it seems like it's going to add more cost on the opposite end, on the disposal side, because you're going to have to have somebody or some, you're going to have to invest in some other process to cut those bottle caps off, and you're still going to have to dispose of them separately.
Again, they're not being disposed. Even at Hamburg WSG, and they ask you to remove the bottle caps, they have a place where you put them, and then they get put into the recycling bin. I do want to assure everybody, those bottle caps are recyclable. You just don't get your nickel back.
Okay, well, again, I'm, that's, that's the only one that I just struggle with. With more regulations being put on manufacturers, and I think what that's going to, ultimately, that's going to mean that now my bottle of whatever I bought, that now has to have an attached cap, just got more expensive. So that I, and I'm, and now it's going to actually put more responsibility back on me to deal with this, because I can't recycle that CRV without now having to cut the darn thing off, and then making sure I get that into the recycling, when that's the exact same process that I have right now. I have a cap, I have a bottle. One goes in, in recycling, one goes CRV. Now I have a cap and a bottle, and one goes in recycling and one goes in CRV, except that now they are attached and I have to cut them off, and likely, I'm going to pay more. I just, I'm not sure how that benefits us. And maybe I'm just not sharp enough to figure this out, but that doesn't seem like that fixes the problem. You still have a cap, you still have a bottle.
The, I appreciate everything you're saying, and I, please, understand, I am merely trying to explain my understanding of the...
And for those that are not, the bottles that are not...
But the problem they're trying to address is plastic bottle caps loose in the ocean. That's the problem they're trying to address.
And bottles that are not CRV, it makes sense with. But I wonder what the percentage of bottles with plastic caps, CRV versus non-CRV, and I don't know what that is. Maybe that's in the minutia of this legislation, and I should read the whole thing. So I'll admit that I have not read the whole bill.
And if the board isn't comfortable with any of these positions, there's no need to adopt any of them. So it's, it's fine. And I'm fine on advocating the issues that the board wishes to advocate, but if you'd rather wait and maybe bring this up next meeting, where I print all the legislation, I'm happy to do that.
Well, I don't need you to print all the legislation. I can, I can read it online, I can get it up. I just, I, I'll just, I'll just say for me, I didn't get all of them read, and so...
At this point, is it okay if I make a motion? I'd like to oppose both AB nineteen twelve and AB twenty-seven seventy-nine at this point, since they're on the floor. I don't think they're going to, I don't think either one's a good piece of legislation at this point.
Can I have a motion? Have a second? Okay, having no second, that, that will die. Do we have any other motions or any other recommendations regarding the legislation topics that Director Ward has provided just? Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, so we have a, we will take these a piece at a time, as, so we have a motion and a second to oppose AB nineteen twelve. Any specific public comment to Assembly Bill nineteen twelve? Okay, seeing none, then?
Just in the final discussion before the vote, can I appreciate the commissioners explaining the message for opposing?
And I think that in response to that, I would be happy to send you the letter that the city, and while I would not expect you have to use it verbatim, it certainly provides the rationale behind the city's opposition. I would be happy to forward that to you. Okay?
Does that suffice?
That'd be, okay. Okay, so AB nineteen twelve, an opposition letter. Why don't you pull the vote, please?
Commissioner Cohen?
Yes.
Commissioner Naffa?
Yes.
Commissioner Greenow?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Chair and score?
Yes. All right, any other action that you would like to take regarding any of the other bills that Director Ward has presented to us this afternoon? Or recommendations, either one? I would certainly, if we have no other actions, I would certainly recommend that, that we bring this back to the June meeting, and that we double down our efforts to, to do our own research on this, if there's not another here that we have consensus on today to, to move on. Anybody?
I would just agree with you, that I think we should bring this back at a later date.
Okay, we'll take public comment on our legislative list. Do we have any?
I knew my mic wasn't working in my thing, I don't know why. I mean, Cooper, I'd like to know a little bit more about some of these bills. If the, if the cap that's attached is required to be of the same type of plastic that the bottle is, then what's the harm of just keeping it on? Perhaps we should require it to be of the same type of plastic, and that would solve both of those problems. Also, I guess a little discouraged about how little we tackle of our solid waste problems. I mean, the straw, the straw in the bottle, in the, in the cup, the giant plastic cup, and, and it's a bill devoted to the straw. And here we go to all these rest, you know, fast food places, and use cups. Giant, I mean, giant plastic cups. I mean, have you seen the size of the Subway cups? Oh my God. I mean, we can recycle, and we can keep recycling, recycling, and predict, and this plastic comes at a great cost to society, and I think this is where our little committee, and our little county, and small communities that really want to do the right thing can excel, instead of just tackling the straw. Let's do something about the cup. Why not make a resolution that Delmore is not going to put... Why not make a resolution that Delano is not gonna put up with all these plastic cups anymore, like something like we did with the best of intentions, our plastic bags, which are now just thicker in the stores rather than single use, but it had good intentions. But why, why not compostable cups? Why not, that's it for Delano County. You wanna do business in Delano County, you have a compostable cup. I know they have a little plastic on around the outsides, but, or, I mean, they could have cellulose, but I, I just, I, I just think we can do a better job. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, any other public comment?
As I bring this back in June, I think perhaps it might help the board if I indicate a staff perception of priority, indicating what we think are the most critical bills.
Please, that would be great.
Because I know it is overwhelming and thank you for your time and effort in discussing them today.
I do have one more thing to say.
Sure.
It's sort of a general comment. I do agree with Eileen, I think we can do better. I think that we need to lobby Sacramento to drop a lot of these regulations, to open the market, to make it more affordable for the, the private sector to get involved in this. I think that we get tied up in a lot of bureaucracy with, with the regulations that they, they hand down and the unfunded mandates. So I think that's a platform that we should be at least looking into filling, in my opinion.
Well, yeah, I agree and I think that.
There's a lot of red tape and, and other things that get in the way of solutions from Sacramento.
We are certainly in changing times when it comes to the, the recycling world that we live in, which is why, and I said, I said June 3rd, it's June 4th, Mr. Ward, I, I got the date wrong, June 3rd is actually Sunday. But I, I think that that's why being at the CalRecycle Forum on the global, global recycling markets is really critical and it may be that, that you can leverage that into some other meetings down there to try to figure out what's, what's happening statewide and how we can approach this on a regional level, so. Okay, so you're gonna try to strategize and give us some, some priorities on, on some of these legislative items that are June meeting? Perfect.
Yes, sir.
All right. What else do we have? We have anything else from back here through here? Are we done? Okay, just, and you guys will love this, since we just carried this over to June 19th, I won't be here and either will Mr. Howard on June 19th. So we either need to look at rescheduling another meeting or the three of you are going to have to tackle this. I apologize, but we will both be in Japan on June 19th.
What if we would plan to have that meeting a week before?
Well, you'll have to look at your calendars.
The 12th of June? The 12th of June?
I know.
Or that Monday, the 11th? I'm wide open on those days.
12?
Did you really say that?
He's just, the day's gonna be ruined already. Just go ahead.
Okay, so we're gonna go the 12th at 3:30? I'm good. Eli, does that work for you?
That's fine, yes. Okay. So the 12th at 3:30? So our, we're proposing that we will move our meeting from June 19th to June 12th at 3:30. Do we need action on that or is that just something as long as we notice it properly?
Yeah, I, I think direction from the board is sufficient.
Okay, consensus, all right. Perfect, June 12th, we've got it. All right, anything else, Mr. Ward? Okay, thank you. We're adjourned till June 12th.